All right, thank you, everybody. How are you? All right, thanks, everybody, for attending this April 26, 2021, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We are going to start tonight with a presentation of a governor's proclamation by Representative David Faulkner.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Senator, would you join me, Mr. President?
Just go to this, this right here, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
Members of Homewood and the City Council and the Mayor McCluskey, thank you for letting me be here tonight to present a resolution that we passed in the legislature that has been signed by the governor commending Dimitri's Barbecue Restaurant in Homewood, Alabama. I was not asked to do this by my friend Sam, who owns and runs Dimitri's Barbecue, but I frequent the establishment quite often, and I saw an article and it occurred to me what a staple this restaurant has been in the Homewood community. And I wanted to recognize him and his family, really, because, Sam, I hate to tell you this, but I realize the resolution doesn't mention you.
That's okay.
And I feel terrible about that, but I just realized that today.
You know, the hamburger flippers always get left out.
Okay. And so, but I did want to briefly, because I think this means so much to the Homewood community, what your establishment is to this community, and I wanted to read this resolution. This is HTR 43, signed by Governor Ivey. Commending Dimitri's Barbecue Restaurant in Homewood, Alabama. Whereas in 1950, type Nicos immigrated from Greece through the port of New Orleans, he held several jobs before he was in a position to launch his own business. He relied on the culinary and business skills he acquired working at a barbecue restaurant in Inslee, Alabama, before moving to Homewood to open the El Rancho Restaurant in 1961. And whereas, following more than a decade of hard work, during which time he helped define what is considered traditional barbecue, Mr. Nicos opened Dimitri's Barbecue Restaurant in Homewood, Alabama, which offered fine food in a family setting to diners throughout the Birmingham metropolitan area. And whereas, over the next six decades, Dimitri's Barbecue Restaurant evolved into a landmark in downtown Homewood, became a meeting place for workers to enjoy breakfast on their way to work, the patrons also crowded into the restaurant to enjoy plates of barbecue, sandwiches, salads, and fresh vegetables for lunch and dinner. And whereas Dimitri's Barbecue is now recognized as the oldest restaurant in Homewood, continuously operated by the same family. It continues to have the warm welcome from the Nicos family that was introduced 60 years ago. And it should have said Sam Nicos. Be it resolved by the Legislature of Alabama, both houses therefore concurring that we recognize and commend Dimitri's Barbecue Restaurant on their 60 years of operation and service in Homewood and the Birmingham metropolitan area, and this resolution is offered to them with heartiest congratulations and best wishes for continued success. Signed by Governor Kay Ivey. Sam, congratulations, and council, thank you for letting me. Mayor, let me present this tonight to Sam.
Absolutely.
-matter of personal privilege for your next announcement for these Eagle Scouts that have achieved this and are all Homewood residents. I just want to say congratulations to these young men for this achievement. I try to speak whenever I can and get a certificate of recognition for Eagle Scouts for what they stand for, their value of service primarily, standing for values of God and country, and it means so much to me to know that we have young people that are still achieving this and holding true to those ideals, and particularly their service to their fellow man and their community. And all of them, obviously, have demonstrated that by becoming Eagle Scouts. So I just wanted to say congratulations to all of the Eagle Scouts who will be introduced next, and let them know that I would love to get you a certificate of recognition from the legislature. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Faulkner. We appreciate it. All right, and with that, Mr. Mayor, if you want to come up and talk to us about these Eagle Scouts.
No, thank you very much. Yes, we would like to, if they would, come up here and stand behind us. First of all, I do want to say thank you to Councilor Andres and to Councilor Harden for putting this group together. I know it was painstaking trying to get everybody together at once, but if you guys would come up here, we just want you to speak into the microphone, introduce yourselves, tell us a little bit about your projects, because we know everybody would certainly like to hear about that, so. And then they're going to also lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Hello, I'm Charlie Farrell, and my project was by the Jefferson County Board of Education. It was a stone monument that says, "Homewood, established 1926," I believe, and it's just saying, "You're entering Homewood and welcome."
Thank you very much.
I'm James Spencer, and for my project, I built three garden beds at the West Trinity campus for their food bank.
Hi, I'm Patrick Harris, and I built a set of stairs on the Smythe Trail at Red Mountain Park.
My name's Jack Farrell. Charlie's my twin, but I built a stone monument on the corner of Point Sienna and Hermosa Drive. It says, "Welcome, Homewood."
I'm David Kirk, and I built two flag retirement boxes, one of which is actually here at City Hall, and the other is at the new police precinct down in West Xavier Hills.
I'm Will Harden. I built the San Valo Court in Patriot Park.
Excellent. Well, thank you guys very much. Here, we'll take a picture. I'll do a picture of you guys.
And we need a picture with our scout master as well.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. Great. I'll give this to your parents.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. I think we got to-
Yeah, y'all stay right there. Ms. Salter is going to do our invocation, and then y'all can lead us in the pledge. If everyone will please stand.
Y'all bear with me tonight. I gotta put this on my heart. I'm just gonna read a song real quick. I talk fast, so it won't take very long. But we had a wedding here at Rosewood Hall this weekend, or this past week, and just made my heart rejoice to finally be back to some normalness of being able to be people, so I wanted to read a song. Psalm 103. Praise the Lord, my soul, all my inmost being, praise his holy name. Praise the Lord, my soul, and forget not all his benefits, who forgives all your sins and heals all your diseases; who redeems your life from the pit and crowns you with love and compassion; who satisfies your desire with good things, so that your youth is renewed like the eagles. The Lord works righteousness and justice for all the oppressed. He made his ways to Moses, his deeds to the people of Israel. The Lord is compassionate and gracious, slow to anger, abounding in love. He will not accuse, nor will he harbor his anger forever. He does not treat us as our sins deserve, or repay us according to our iniquities. For as high as the heavens are above the earth, so great is his love for those who fear him. As far as the east is from the west, so far has he removed our transgressions from us. As a father has compassion on his children, so the Lord has compassion on those who fear him, for he knows how we are formed, he remembers that we are dust. The life of mortals is like grass, they flourish like a flower of the field. The wind blows over it, and it is gone, and its place remembers it no more. But from everlasting to everlasting, the Lord's love is with those who fear him, and his righteousness with their children's children, and those who keep his covenant and remember to obey his precepts. The Lord has established his throne in heaven, and his kingdom rules over all. Praise the Lord, you his angels, you mighty ones who do his bidding, who obey his word. Praise the Lord, all his heavenly hosts, you his servants who do his will. Praise the Lord, all his works everywhere in his dominion. Praise the Lord, my soul. Amen.
Thank you very much. All right, guys, you're up.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, with that, we will call this meeting to order, and Ms. Salter, if you will call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Councilor Gualtney?
Here.
Councilor Gier?
Here.
Councilor Alamon?
Here.
You're gonna do the invocation next week. Next, Councilor Fuller, right? Councilor Wolferson?
Here.
Councilor Sims?
Here.
Councilor Jones?
Here.
Councilor Smith?
Here.
Councilor Nelms?
Here.
Councilor Andres?
Here.
Councilor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here. All right, next, we have the reading of the minutes from our April 12, 2021, meeting. I would entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of such minutes that were distributed earlier this week by Ms. Salter, and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 11 to 0, which brings us to our next item, board vacancies. We'll start with the Board of Education position for Ward 1. I understand that we've got a nomination, and Mr. Gualtney, since you are the liaison as well as one of the Ward 1 reps, I'll let you have the honors.
Yes, we would like to nominate Justin Russell for Ward 1 BOE.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Russell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 11 to 0. Congratulations to Mr. Russell. Next, we have a library board position from Ward 3. I understand we've got a nomination for that as well. Mr. Jones, Mr. Sims?
Yes, Mr. Wyatt. So we met and conducted interviews last Tuesday, and we would like to make a motion to nominate Dr. Kia Kraft for the role.
All right, that is a motion for Dr. Kraft?
Second.
The second from Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is also 11 to 0. Congratulations to Dr. Kraft.
I'll listen and I'll start with that with it.
Thank you very much.
And I'm, Ms. Salter, I'm leaving. And by the way, Homewood is up 3-0.
Go Patriots!
Fantastic. Good luck with the rest of the game.
3-0, didn't it just start?
Yeah.
They've only been playing for like-
How many of your talk made up you play?
That's right.
Maybe you should stay away.
Yeah, really.
Mr. President, if you don't mind-
Yes, Ms. Mayor.
For board, since we're on board vacancies, I have two appointments to the beautification board, Alexis McBrayer and Christopher Smith. Both of them have requested to be on the board, and I know they talked to Councilor Sims as well, so if we could get both of them on there, that would be fantastic.
All right, I can't even remember since this board is so new. Do we have to vote on that, or is that just a mayor appointment?
It's just a mayor appointment.
Fantastic.
So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I know it's your appointment, but we'll do a letter form and copy it to you when you get to him.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, we have one addition to the agenda tonight. This will be added to the committee referral agenda. It is 180421, request for consideration to surplus obsolete and/or equipment no longer needed for municipal services, brought to us by James Yates, RIT Director, Assistant City Clerk. No. Melody Salter, City Clerk and Assistant Finance Director, and this will go to the Finance Committee. And with that, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, which brings us to the-
10 to 0.
Oh, I'm sorry, 10 to 0, thank you. Which brings us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, and second by Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 10 to 0 as well. Which brings us to the old business agenda, 180321, public hearing continued from April 12, 2021, at 6:00 PM to permit a front yard fence partially in the right-of-way along the creek at 624 Forest Drive, brought to us by Scott Smith, the homeowner, and Wyatt Pugh of our BEZ department. We have already had a report from Special Issues since this was carried over from last week, so we won't bother with that, but with a report, and we'll just go straight ahead, and I will open this public meeting. And Mr. Pugh, what do you got for us?
All right, sir. As you can see on the screen, is the proposed and the existing there, and then, as he slides down, you see the proposed fence that he would like to put along the creek. That is also, that is in the right-of-way, that's just inside the city right-of-way, so the request is for a front yard fence, and he would also need an indemnification agreement to work in the right-of-way.
How tall is this fence? I'm just noticing a height difference between the existing one and the proposed one.
The existing fence actually has quite a varied height. It goes from about three feet over there to the right, to about six feet over there to the left where the sidewalk is. And I pretty much keep that line.
Okay.
It's level.
Okay, so it's, just to make sure, is it about the same height? Are you saying it's level with the existing fence?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that a six-foot fence you're gonna put up? It's six feet on the left, and it gets shorter to the right.
Okay.
It follows the existing fence, like us. We just really just want to cover it up, because some sections have barbed wire on it, and it's just really unsightly.
Got it. Okay, and is it, I'm looking at it, it looks like it's made of wood? Is that?
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions? Well, I'm sorry, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and take questions or comments from council.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So the fence at the, so what does it look like by the sidewalk? Is it, because that chain link goes on the sidewalk as well, right?
Yeah.
Perpendicular? Is there a view, so that's just the wooden fence right there as well?
Only up until the sidewalk, just as it's pictured there.
Yeah, because there's the chain link still right there.
Oh, yeah, in front of the sidewalk would be the existing chain link. I'd maybe plant a couple of hollies there to take that out.
Okay, okay, great, great.
I thought I might have a better chance of getting it approved if we didn't go all the way to the street.
That'll be an improvement on the chain link, I believe, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Sir, is that a stained fence? I mean, it looks stained from there.
Yes, sir.
So you're gonna stain the fence that's supposed to leave it?
Yeah, really want to be cautious to have it stayed maintained, not have it turned in a gray pile of splatter, so that's it's off.
Make a motion to approve the fence as well as the indemnification agreement required.
All right, motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Nelms, for approval of the fence pending the indemnification agreement. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0 and approved, and that will be Resolution 2152. All right. All right, next item is 220321, public hearing continued from April 12, 2021, at 6:00 PM for consideration of a variance to increase the size of two wall signs at 2719, 19th Place South, brought to us by Rob Burchell from Alpha Graphics and Wyatt Pugh. Again, this was carried over from last time, so we've already had the report. The public hearing is still open. So, Mr. Pugh?
Yes, sir. The request is, as you see here, the downtown district limits the height of letters to 24 inches. They're proposing a 27 and 1/4 inch tall. That was according to the email that you gave me. Is that correct? Okay. 27 and 1/4 inch tall letter, max.
Okay, and so it's just the size of the letters that's the only variance?
That's correct, yeah. The sign itself, as far as the total coverage, is within, is compliant.
Okay. All right, anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from the council.
Yes, I just, I have one question. So looking at this building, are there, are these two tenants gonna take up the entire space, or is there a third available space? Two-thirds of the space.
One of the signs is not over, is it? We'll be about to-
Okay. And is it best to handle the consistency in lettering at a later date, then, or is-
Yeah, I think that tenant would then need to come back before us to get their own variance.
Okay, thank you.
They're not gonna have the same lettering, because they're gonna be different.
Yeah, it could, we don't know what they're gonna ask for, but even in addition to that, I think they've got to be the one to request it to receive it. Mr. Jones?
I was just wondering why you couldn't be within the size that we allow.
Well, we did research it, and we were, we thought we were inside, and we did not realize it was a special, you know, area for, a different, you know, height difference for the area downtown. So we were within the, I think it's 35 square feet or whatever it is, and we were within that, but we were not, when we made the sign, we were just a little bit enlarged letters.
Okay, so it's, I mean, so it's really not an undue hardship, it's just you, that's just how it was designed, not knowing.
It was designed, yes.
Okay, so could you live with what's within the sign ordinance? I guess that's my question.
The sign's made, and it would be costly to remake the sign.
So you're saying it's already produced?
I believe it's already been produced, it's not up yet, but it's already been-
It's not, it's not installed.
So it's not-
It's produced, it was, yes.
So you're gonna be angry at us if we don't approve this, it sounds like.
The owner will be angry.
Right, yeah, well, the owner will be angry. Someone's gonna be angry. I hate, I mean, I mean, I hope in the future you advise your client that-
Yeah, we now know what the ordinance is, and we'll be, we'll definitely stay within that if any other comes up.
Well, I'm with Walters a little bit. We make these sign ordinances, and we seem to be constantly saying, oh, God, we're gonna give a variance to it, but I know where this building is, and the signage isn't, you know, it's on a side street, I don't think it's gonna affect a lot of folks negatively. Probably help them just, they moved off the main drag onto a side street, so probably help their business to have a bigger sign.
And the owner's not here.
Where are you? I don't know where you are.
The owner's not here. Well, could you come up and talk to us? You're making him answer all the tough questions.
Well, the design of the logo-
I'm sorry, could you just take the name for the record, it's not even-
Yes. Yeah, everything he said. In addition, the way the logo's designed, some of the letters are shorter than the others, so certainly, if we would have known this, we could have rearranged that and, you know, made that happen earlier. We really would like the same sign that we had on the existing building. We'd love that size, but we realize that's extremely larger than what we're used to.
And your father's grandfather, too.
So, anyway, we're just asking for the, you know, we'd love to have the variance. We don't feel like it's too far out of whack, but we do understand now the process a little better, and would ask for forgiveness and, you know, allow it.
Okay, thank, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Then I would entertain a motion. Second. All right, motion by Ms. Nelms.
To grant the variance for the size, the 27 and 1/4, is that correct? For the size, the variance.
All right, and I believe we had a second for Ms. Sims.
Mr. Sims.
Mr. Sims, excuse me. I was actually thinking of something else. Did I close the public hearing? Does anyone remember?
I did.
I have 623.
Okay, fantastic.
On the record, yes.
Fantastic. All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Nelms and a second from Mr. Sims, excuse Mr. Sims, I apologize. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is approved 10 to 0.
Thank you.
And will be Resolution 2153.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, that brings us to our next item, 020421, public hearing set for April 26, 2021, for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance to add one additional wall sign at 2713 18th at the Street South, brought to us by West Daniel, Daniel Sign Company, and Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with a report from Special Issues, and I believe Ms. Andres is going to give us that.
Correct. The committee met, and after a report from Greg Cobb, voted 5 to 0 to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Councilor Alamon.
Thank you very much. All right, so with that, we will open this public hearing, and once more, Mr. Pugh.
Yes, as you may recall, Mr. Cobb came in and explained that this sign was approved under the old sign ordinance, and in terms of the size, but, so this is a request for one additional sign that goes on the other side of the wall.
Same sign, just on the other side.
Same sign mirrored on the other side, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from the council. And if there aren't any, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, motion by Mr. Alamon for approval, I'm assuming?
For approval, yes.
And a second from Mr. Jones. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is also 10 to 0, and will be 2154.
Still one stronger.
All right, next item, 030421, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a fence setback variance at 200 Morris Boulevard, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh, and I believe one other person.
Trouble.
Official business.
Could you state your name, please?
Justin Hefner, owner, resident, 200 Morris Boulevard.
All right, and we, this item also is coming from Special Issues, so we'll have a report, Ms. Andres.
The committee met and voted 5 to 0 to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Councilor Sims.
All right, thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing on this matter, and Mr. Pugh?
As you can see on the screen, there's a mock-up of what the request looks like. They want to extend the fence out on, up closer to the front of the house to encompass the deck area. It would be an 11, I believe I said it was an 11 and 1/2 foot variance request, side setback request.
All right, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then we will close the public hearing and see if there are any questions or comments from council. And if there aren't, then I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andres, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 10 to 0, and will be 2155.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Hefner. All right, that brings us to 130221, public hearing set for May 10, 2021, at 6:00 PM for consideration of changes to the landscaping and tree requirements, brought to us by Councilors Gualtney and Andres. This was referred from the Planning Commission on a 501 favorable vote, so this will just be carried over tonight, and we will hear it at our next meeting. meeting on the 10th. Next item, 05-0421. Public hearing set for May 10, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to rezone two small strips of land resulting from one resurvey. Request to rezone a strip of land at 316 Sterrett Avenue to be added to 320 Sterrett Avenue from PR1 to NPD, and to rezone a strip of land at 320 Sterrett Avenue to be added to 316 Sterrett Avenue from NPD to PR1. The applicant is Ronald Van Erv and Charles Williams. This also comes from the Planning Commission on a 9 to 0 favorable vote in favor of the rezone. This will also be carried over for our next meeting on the 10th. Next item, 06-0421. Public hearing set for May 10, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to declare property at 307 West Glenwood Drive, a public nuisance brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. This will also be carried over to the 10th. 07-0421. Public hearing set for May 10, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to declare the property at 809 Columbiana Road, a public nuisance brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. This one will also be carried over to the 10th, so get ready for the 10th. We have a few public hearings. All right. Next item, 13-0321. Request to hear proposal from Avenue Regarding Delinquent Business License Recovery for Out-of-Town Business. Businesses brought to us by Counselor Walter Jones and Robert Brigitte, our Finance Director, as well as Mel Salter, our City Clerk. This item was carried over from our April 12 meeting. Mr. Jones, would you mind giving us a refresher on the report from that, from Finance Committee?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee had met previously and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item pending review from Mr. Kendrick. And we carried it over at the last council meeting. We had, we had some changes that needed to be made that Mr. Kendrick recommended, so the contract looks good now, so we would go back with that same motion from Finance.
Okay. So, with that motion coming from Finance, are there any other questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And that is also 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 2156. Next item, 25-0417. Request for consideration of 18th Street Revitalization Project, brought to us by Britt Tames. Do we have a report from Finance?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met April 19, voted 5 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the report from Mr. Kendrick.
All right. And is there a motion to go into executive session?
I would move that we go into executive session.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick, do you want to tell us what we put our limitation on it?
Be limited to the discussion of the purchase or sale of real estate. Negative, public discussion of which might have a negative impact on the bag.
Thank you very much. All right. We will be back in about 10, 15 at the most minutes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'll move that we go back into regular session.
All right. We have a motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Harden. Is that you? To move back into regular session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll give you the first second.
Jones and Harden.
Okay, thanks.
And that is 9 to 0.
Do we miss it?
Wolverton is still making his way back.
Okay.
All right. With that, Mr. Kendrick, will you give us a report on your efforts?
Yes, sir. Since, I guess about a month ago, I was asked to contact certain property owners dealing with 18th Street project. Since then, I've met with and had discussions with several of the property owners. Two property owners that we would, I'd like to talk about tonight is Ed's Pet World, is track number seven. And the property adjacent to that is, it's the barber shops owned by Mr. George Barber. In our discussions with George Barber's representative, the mayor and I met with him here in City Hall, and we've made progress and essentially have an agreement as to the price and the timing of the proposal. There are some terms of the proposed contract that we need to get worked out to make sure that Aldott will approve the contract. Been in consultation with Keith Smith, the project engineer on this, to make sure that he's comfortable with the terms and conditions we've worked out. But that's, hopefully can be resolved here in the next couple of days. The other property is Ed's Pet World. We've had discussions and met on site with Keith, myself, the attorney for Eddie Crosby, and the son who runs the business. Mr. Crosby's out of the country and not available, at least not available to us. We've had discussions about that for what, ongoing two or three weeks now. I was hoped, I had expected to get a proposal from them last week. I received one this afternoon late, and it's not really what we had ever talked about. It had some terms, the price that they, that had been appraised by the state was half of what they put in their proposal, when it had some other terms and conditions that, as relates to the length of the construction period and things that Mr. Strickland says he has to have as a minimum to be able to accomplish the work. If we need to understand, we're just now acquiring temporary construction easements to build a sidewalk. We're not taking or invading anyone's property. We're just simply asking their permission and authorizations essentially allow us to build the sidewalks on the city's property. And Mr. Strickland is of the opinion that we need some ability to get on their property, to properly construct safely those sidewalks. So, I'd recommend to you, and I've proposed a resolution, that you'd authorize me to continue to negotiate with Ed's Pet World and hopefully make some resolution, but if not, to authorize the condemnation of that temporary construction easement if and when, in consultation with the mayor and the president of council, we don't feel like we're making any substantial progress to continue to delay the agreement. And I prepared a resolution and presented it to you with materials that would simply authorize the continuing negotiation and/or, if necessary, condemnation of those temporary construction easements for that parcel property.
All right. And let me just make sure that we all understand a couple of things, and Mr. Kendrick, you can correct me if I'm wrong about any of this. What we're talking about is essentially a temporary condemnation. In other words, we're not taking any land from them. We're just, this condemnation would be temporary, allow us to work on their land, and then the land would go back to them at the end. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. We have to put it back in substantially the same or better condition. It's very, it's a very normal process when you're building a public improvement project on our right of way. But in order to build that properly and safely, we have to have some time where we're on a private property to be able to construct, properly construct the sidewalks. Mr. Strickland's here, he might have a better way to express that, but this is simply a temporary use of someone's property to build these public improvements, which as soon as the construction is in place, then we certainly would remove and repair any, any damage or any harm that we might have caused to property.
Because all of, and Mr. Strickland, you can correct me if I'm wrong, all of the actual improvements are within the right of way, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, everything that's permanent is in our right of way. This is just about a condemnation, a temporary condemnation to allow us to work on their property so that we can add sidewalks and some parking to downtown Homewood on our right of way.
Correct. Everything that's constructed is on the city right of way, and this is simply to allow us some opportunity to encroach possibly on private property for a temporary period of time, just during the construction of the sidewalks in this case.
And secondly, nothing about this action would prohibit you from continuing your negotiations with Ed's Pet World and/or, and even reaching a resolution if that can be done?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I think everyone's hope is that that, that's what will happen, is that those negotiations will continue and will be fruitful. But if not, that this is a step that can be taken temporarily. One other point, as I understand it from your report, with the other properties, we are making progress. We've gotten the two big items, it sounds like, done of cost, of price and of length of time. We're simply working out some details, and we certainly would hope that those negotiations would continue to be fruitful, reach a resolution, and that we could avoid having to take this step with any of them if we can. And if we, if we can't, we can't. But, but based on how the negotiations are going to this point, we're hopeful that that will be able, that we'll be able to continue and reach a resolution with those.
I think that's a fair summary.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Sims?
Yes, I just have a point of clarification of something that Mr. Kendrick said in his summary. So, in talking about with, in negotiation with Ed's Pet World, could you please restate where you're at on the negotiation with them for pricing? It sounded like you said half, and I didn't, maybe I misunderstood that.
The price that was put, I received a proposal this afternoon, okay? We had hoped to have something yesterday, or, excuse me, last week, last Wednesday. The price put in the proposal I received today was approximately double, almost double the price that was the appraised value, based on the work that had been done by Keith and the negotiators that the city and Aldott had hired previously.
I think it was the state was half of...
The appraised value was approximately a half of what the value that was...
What they put in their proposal.
Thank you. That's why, I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you.
And we had no discussions about a different price, although they have told me in the past that they want to get their own appraisal and their own survey. I think I've reported that to you, counsel.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'll note for the resolution to recommend the condemnation for temporary construction easement for track number seven for the 18th Street project with the stipulations that Mr. Kendrick made just earlier.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 2157. I'm sorry. I thought Andrew came back in. I apologize. 9 to 0. Resolution 2157. All right.
Is it just track seven?
Yes, just track seven. All right. 04-0321. Bid opening set for April 19, 2021, at 4:31 p.m. for Mamie L. Foster Rosedale Drive Intersection Improvement Project, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. Do we have a report, we have a, a report from Finance? I think we start, we've got two things we got to do. One is to amend the budget and then for actual acceptance of the bid. Is that right? Okay.
Very good. Yes, sir, Mr. President. The first resolution would be to amend the budget in the amount of $142,384 to be paid of Bond Fund 26, and that's a line item 26-11-589145. So, that would be the first recommendation.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and take that one up? And so, we have a motion from Finance on that. Any questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 9 to 0 and will be 2158. And then we'll go back to Mr. Jones for the bid.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Again, we met on the, on the 19th of April. 5 to 0 to recommend accepting the bid from Dunn Construction.
All right. So, we also have a motion from Finance on that. Any questions or comments from the council?
And to note, they were the lowest responsible and responsive bidder.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 9 to 0 as well and will be 2159. Brings us to 01-0321. Request for consideration to add a crosswalk between 232 and 236 Hall Avenue at the end of the cut-through for the neighborhood, brought to us by Mario Neves and Counselor Alamon. And we will start with a report from Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval funding up to $4,000 from the capital projects sidewalks repair line item. So, 5 to 0 from Finance.
All right. And, Mr. Kendrick, if you could give us a first reading, please.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to provide for the installation of pedestrian crosswalk on Hall Avenue in the city. Your order aim by the city is follows the chief of police. He'll be directed to install a pedestrian crosswalk between 232 and 236 Hall Avenue at the end of the cut-through for the neighborhood. Section 2, the disordinance shall also authorize installation of ADA ramp at the location of the pedestrian crosswalk authorized by paragraph one above, and the council does appropriate a sum up to $4,000 to be paid from account number 1211-581733, sidewalk repairs for the cost of the installation of the ramp. Section 3, that all drivers of motor vehicles that find in the highway code shall yield to pedestrians located in the crosswalk as defined above. Section 4, any person violating the provision of this ordinance shall be punished as provided ordinance, section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances upon conviction. Section 5, all of the ordinances and parts contrary thereof hereof are repealed. Section 6, any part of provision of ordinance declared to be unconstitutional, invalid by court of competent jurisdiction shall not affect the other provisions of the ordinance. Section 7, the ordinance shall become effective medley upon adoption by the city council, approved by the mayor's, otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Wolverton. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
And the record's on Mr. Wolverton's side? Okay, wait a second. Okay, Counselor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Geer?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith is absent. Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So, that is 10 to 0. And now I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Wolverton. Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Okay, Counselor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Geer?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith is still absent. Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
All right. 2804.
So, that is approved and will be ordinance 2804. Next item, 10-0421. Request for consideration for a tent variance for Trinity Methodist Vacation Bible School, brought to us by Counselor Smith. And we will start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Andrus?
Committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
All right. So, we have a motion from Special Issues. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0 and is 2160. All right. Which brings us to 04-0421. Request for consideration to rezone the northern portion of 260 Oxmore Road from Gerd to C5. The applicant is Chelsea Payne from Massey Stotzer in Nichols to permit the construction of a three-story storage facility. Planning Commission had a vote of 9 to 0 favorable recommendation of the rezone.
She don't, she don't...
I was trying to say, I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry, Ms. Andrus was going to report.
I was trying to say, Ms. Andrus, do you have a report?
Yes, sure. Committee met and after hearing from Mr. Mike Patel at 260 Oxmore Road, voted 5 to 0 to recommend setting a public hearing for May 24, 2021, at 6:00 p.m., pending receipt of the development plan and renderings of ingress and egress. The motion was made by Counselor Waltney and seconded by Counselor Nelms. The item was then carried over for further review in committee.
All right. So, we will set this public hearing for May 24 at 6:00 p.m. All right. That brings us to the committee referral, the amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended committee referral agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Wolverton, second from Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0. Which brings us to other new business. 14-0421. Request to set a public hearing for consideration to permit a front yard fence at 1850 Lake Ridge Road, brought to us by Chase Bowers and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that public hearing for May 10 at 6:00 p.m. 15-0421. Request to set a public hearing for a variance to the sign ordinance at 2831 Linden Avenue, brought to us by Michael Disco and Wyatt Pugh. This will go to, is also going to Special Issues Committee. We will also set that public hearing for... Linden Avenue, brought to us by Michael Disco and Wyatt Pugh. This will go to, is also going to special issues committee. We will also set that public hearing for May tenth at six P.M. Sixteen-oh-four, twenty-one. Request for consideration to appoint a city arborist, brought to us by the mayor, who I believe had to step out. Ms. Andrews, do you have something on that?
I do, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor McCluskey would like to appoint Abraham Odrzyn as our new city arborist, replacing Henry Hughes.
All right.
Abraham, what was his last name?
Odrzyn, O-D-R-Z-I-N.
Okay.
So as I understand this, this is a mayoral appointment, and that we will need to, then the city will enter into a contract with his entity. Mr. Kendrick, would you mind putting together that contract?
Sure.
And that, that contract will then come back before us for approval. So I don't think there's any action that we actually have to take tonight. All right. And that takes us to seventeen-oh-four, twenty-one. Request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of April thirteen, twenty-twenty-one through April sixteen, twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I yield to Mr. Harden, who, who worked on the vouchers this time.
Yes, I did review all the vouchers, and I am approving the vouchers as, as they were submitted to me.
I'm taking, that's a motion?
That is a motion to approve the vouchers. I apologize.
It's okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Jones. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also ten to zero, and that is twenty-one sixty-one. All right, which brings us to the end of the agenda. As I said, the mayor had to step out, so we will skip over him and start with Mr. Walton.
Yeah, the mayor stepped over and said, he had nothing to report this evening, that he had to go tend to an emergency, so, keep in mind your thoughts. Hopefully it's not family-related. I don't have any official announcements this evening. I will say, I have the pleasure of having a cleaned off public safety agenda, so I do not have to set the public safety meeting. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Gier?
Yes, I'd just like to, once again, thank all the Ward One residents who applied for the Board of Education spot. Thank you all, six of you, for applying. We appreciate that. And then the second thing is, yoga in the park continues this Saturday at Spring Park. We had our first yoga in the park a couple of weeks ago, what was it, last weekend? Or two, maybe two weeks ago. Very successful in Spring Park, and we're just continuing that. Jeremy Love has gotten together with a few others, and there was a great group, people all around Homewood. So on May, May the first, same day as We Love Homewood Day, eight A.M., yoga in the park. Bring a, bring a mat or a towel, and join us. And so, and then on May the fifteenth, we'll be, still be at Spring Park, but it'll be in the afternoon at five P.M. So lots of fun. That's it.
Thank you very much. Tralama?
I have nothing to report today. I'm just happy to be here.
We're happy to have you. Mr. Wolverton?
I just wanna, this is the month of birthdays in my family, so just a happy birthday to my brother and my mom, who had birthdays in the last week or so. My brother did fly into town from D.C. over the weekend, and so we got to celebrate with him last night, so. Other than that, we do need to set public works, and do we have, do we say seven-thirty or eight o'clock on Thursday for our, or Wednesday for our forum?
Whichever one you, works better for you.
Let's do eight o'clock.
Okay.
So we are having our Ward Two virtual town hall Wednesday at eight. And then public works?
About three.
Five-thirty?
We're, we'll be at five, at five-thirty.
Okay. Public works, five-thirty. Mr. Kendrick, do you know if we've made any progress on any of the, any of the items that are on there right now? Whether the...
The AT&T people would love to come to your committee meeting. Thanks, Tom.
Right, right, right. Because they weren't able to come last week.
But C-spire, or the Spire, I believe we'll have it worked out by then.
Okay. So we'll, we'll set it for fifteen minutes, hopefully that's enough.
Do I need to contact somebody from AT&T or you or someone?
Oh, why? I've spoken to them at the last minute, it's asked to carry out.
Right.
I'll just, I'll just make a note, you asked me.
Okay. Sounds great.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Yes, thank you, President Wyatt. So I just wanted to give an update on the beautification board. First of all, thanks to the mayor for appointing two new members. Also, I wanted to let you know, there's three events coming up I wanted to make note of. May third, there will be a beautification award presentation at Edgewood Station at ten A.M. for the Quarter Two Beautification Award. For Saturday, May eighth, there will be a cleanup organized around Griffin Creek, Creek, sorry, from eight to ten A.M. That, actually, there's some information online on the beautification board Facebook page for signup genius and other details, but volunteers can meet that morning near Shades Crest Dental over on Broadway Park. And then also on May tenth, which is a Monday, the beautification board will have their next meeting, and that will be in person here at City Hall at noon. So thanks for allowing me to provide those updates, and I'd just also like to say thank you to all our board applicants who interviewed this past week. Both enjoyed having Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday with my fellow councillors interviewing residents interested in those roles for the library board and the school board, and really just continually impressed by the wealth of talent and expertise and commitment that our citizens have in making our city better. And we're really looking to find opportunities for everybody who's interested to get engaged going forward, so we'll be reaching back out to a lot of the applicants. But again, just thanks to everyone who came, submitted their interest in those positions, and we're really, you know, proud to be of such, part of such a great city, which is united to make Homewood the best it can be, so thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I've talked to Mr. Sims on Friday, and we were thinking, what are we gonna do tonight if we're not gonna be at City Hall tonight? We spent the whole week at City Hall, and there, there were some fantastic people we, we interviewed, and it made me realize that I have a lot more to do in my life to, to accomplish, because somebody had fifteen-page, I mean, resume, so I was like, I've got a lot more work to do. I, I wanted to just thank publicly Henry Hughes, and as we're talking about the arborists, this man has given so unselfishly to Homewood over the years, and if you look back at all the things he's done, I mean, hi, his passion for keeping our canopy, planting more trees in twenty-nineteen, we, we, I mean, there's been so many initiatives that we've worked on together with him, and he's gone out to look at trees all over the city, and, and I just want to thank him for that, and I know we'll probably want to thank him in a more formal way, but I, I just wanted to say thank you. And then lastly, I'm so sorry, I'm gonna miss the We Love Homewood Parade, and I know Ms. Salter's department is working feverishly on...
Spoiler alert, you can't, I'm gonna ask him, can I talk to him at the very end for five minutes, so you can't tell him what the theme is? You might already know.
Okay, you can have one minute, but not five. No.
Five seconds, I'm gonna talk faster.
No, I'm just teasing, but no, I just, I'm, I'm sorry, it seems like everything is happening on, on May the first. And my, my daughter's graduating from Alabama, so I'm gonna be there, so I will miss all of you, but I hope, hope you have a wonderful parade, and I'll, I'll be with you.
I was gonna miss last year, because my daughter was graduating from Alabama, but the pandemic messed both things up, so he didn't get a walk.
Well, she only got to pick four people to go to the graduation, so she picked her family, so I thought that was really nice of her. So anyway.
How much she has to pay?
A lot. That's all, thank you.
Ms. Nelms?
Hello. Well, there's about twenty days away from All Things Ward Four Homewood Newsletter, and about a month or two away for our All Things Homewood Town Hall, but those are in the works. And councillor Smith addressed a speed beacon on Salter that you may have noticed has been out for a while, and she got with Randy, and they got that fixed, so if you see that, that is not fixed, please let us know, but it should be up and going, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Andrews?
Well, first, let me set special issues for Ms. Smith. Councillor Wolverton, how long do you need for public works?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, so I'm gonna set special issues for five forty-five. And then I have a question. I really just have three public hearings, so really, do I need to set PND? I don't think I do.
Probably not, if you've sent all of them out, and I think you have, so, probably.
But we have the one for the Massey, but it's not till the twenty-fourth. That was still in committee, but it's not till the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, it's up to you, because you've still gotta send that one out, because we've just set the public hearing in it, but it's up to you as to whether you want it next week or the...
I'd say let's not set PND next week. How about that?
All right.
I'll say that. So I've got special issues at five forty-five, but I'm not gonna set PND, let that. Our unified command call today, the news remains good, our numbers are still steadily declining, however, the people taking their vaccines have also declined, so, you know, spread the word. I took my boys to the airport today to get shot number two, sat in the, sat next to Will Harden and Suzanne Harden in their car, but the whole thing took twenty minutes. I mean, really, it's so easy, and there's so much capacity there. They've got a Spanish-speaking line that's taking a lot of calls. They have the capacity, even at the airport, to take fifteen to seventeen hundred calls a day, so really, there's just a lot of capacity out there, and we really need everyone vaccinated so we can move on. That's really all I have. We had a nice, successful, happy, healthy prom. Now we're moving on to graduation, that's next, honors and graduation, so.
Yep.
These kids are, that's it, that's all I got.
I just looked at your agenda, you sent all the rest of them out without, the ones on May tenth, you sent all those out without recommendation, you just got that twenty-fourth, so you're just gonna wait and do it on the...
Yeah, let's just wait on that, yeah.
All right. So I've got a couple of things. One, I would like to set, unless there's any big problems, I would like to set the committee as a whole meeting for the mid-year review for May tenth at five o'clock, which will be right before council. If everyone can show up an hour early, then we'll set that for then.
Does she make council work session on May the tenth, at five?
Yep. Next, a couple of items that, that have already at least been mentioned. The Exceptional Foundations Chili Cook-Off is on May first, so if you, always, it's always a good time, but you gotta get out there in the morning, because you gotta get back for all the We Love Homewood Day stuff in the afternoon, being on the same day. We will have a float in the parade, which I'm not gonna steal Ms. Salter's thunder, she, I'm gonna let her talk about it. I'm just going to point out one thing, that, that we're only going to have counselors on it again because of COVID. We don't want to crowd the, crowd it too much, so no kids or families or friends this time around, and hopefully by the time we get to another parade, then we can have the kids back on, because they're more fun to have them up there anyway, but we will hold off at least one more time.
You should just put kids and no counselors.
That would be more entertaining, and get more applause, probably.
Sloths, okay, or not?
What?
Sloths?
Sloths are still fine, yes. Sloths are still fine.
That's why we're discussing the theme, in just one second. Five seconds.
Oh, okay. Lastly, I would just echo what's been said about the Board of Education and the library positions. Thank you to everyone who applied. It is a wonderful thing that they give us, that they give us such a tough job of choosing between well-qualified people who want to serve the city. That's a wonderful thing for Homewood, so thank you to all of them, and congratulations to the appointees. I'm excited about what both of them will do moving forward, and certainly excited about what Justin has done in the past as well, so we look forward to that. And with that, I will point out that Mr. Jones said it, but I don't know that he actually formally did it, so just to make sure finance is set for five o'clock. And with that, we are done tonight. Well, she, I'm gonna let her talk. Do you want to talk before I adjourn, or you want to talk that? You guys can talk.
I'm, I'm not gonna give it all away, because if Debbie Fout has a float, we're very competitive, as Robert and I are very competitive about who gets the float. She always beats me, and y'all know I don't have a compet, I don't, I'm a competitor, but I don't have a creative bone in my body. Couple of years ago, it was, it was, it was set for May fourth, and I came up with this myself, not myself, May the fourth be with you, and in Star Wars, we actually got the float decorated, and we got rained out.
Yep.
That was, so I asked Berkeley if there was any theme in Rusty Holly, they said no, and I was like, can I do May the fourth be with you again on May first? Berkeley said yes, but I, everybody thought it was a stretch. We do have a theme, but I'm gonna tell y'all offline on the, on, so in case they are listening. But, but, and I actually researched this myself, and then later y'all have to ask Mr. Kendrick about it, because he gave me some insight about the theme, after he didn't notice what I picked, but y'all wear spring colors.
Spring colors, got it.
Wear spring colors.
I have no idea what she's talking about.
Yes, you do, because I think, yes, you do, because we talked about it today. But I will, I will send you an email, and I'll send you an invite, but apparently the lineup is at five P.M. at the library, Saturday, May first, and the parade kicks off at six, and we can't throw canyons, any tchotchkes this year, no duckies, but maybe next time for the Christmas, but we can't throw anything. But we did get a, it's gonna be moving, so we get a trailer, I mean, a wrecker like normal and all that, they're free, obviously, but spring colors.
Spring colors.
And I'll send you an email about...
And one, and once you get the theme...
We have a theme, please.